We have an item, B1, discussion. The city administrator. Councilmember Collins is on his way, I know that. Hopefully people come in. I guess we'll start with just talking about what the city administrator's position is. One of the things that I heard in the last meeting was that the job description of the city manager, what is it? And people seem to try to think that we're almost recreating that job description. I thought I would pull up, just for everybody's information, to start off. We already do have a job description and we're not going to completely alter it, but in the city code, 1-305, the city administrator, if appointed, the city administrator shall: A) supervise, direct, and assign the duties of all employees and appointed officers and shall ensure professional development training for all of them; B) hire line employees after consultation with department heads and consults with the mayor and/council on hiring the department heads and city officers; C) keep the city council and mayor advised of the city's activities and operations by making regular financial and activity reports; D) provide policy options and recommendations when appropriate to the mayor and city council regarding city operations and execute policy decisions for the council; E) prepare and recommends a proposed annual budget for the city and reduce all expenditures and may approve expenditures up to the limits outlined in the purchasing policy at the time of purchase without prior council approval; F) prepare the council meeting agenda in consultation with the mayor; G) prepare an agenda and conducts regular staff meetings with the city department heads; H) pursuant to city personnel policy and procedures, have the authority to suspend and terminate city employees with the advice and consent of the city council; I serve on various boards and commissions in representing the city and local, regional, and state organizations; and the last, J), provide general educational information to the citizens, the media, and other units of government with policy statements provided by the mayor. And so, we do have a job description that's well outlined. It's very similar to other cities. Hi, how you doing?
Good, how you doing?
Good. And so, I guess we're doing this tonight to kind of talk with staff, the community, Angie from the Chamber, representing the businesses, on what more policy-wise within City Hall we could do maybe differently going in the future. One thing that I've brought up in past meetings and with staff already is, I would like to see some type of internal policy that we have that if the Chamber of Commerce or a church or an organization, Goddard, wants to deliver something to the city council, they have X amount of days, I think that's Aubrey. They have X amount of days to, you know, package that or whatever. What's a X amount of days? I don't know what's reasonable. Real estate, we have a fiduciary duty to deliver if an offer is presented. You know, for myself as the agent, we have three business days to deliver that to our client. Now, I'm not saying it's three business days, but it can be something like that. I don't know if the staff or, we can start with the other council members, if you guys have anything in particular that you would like to see or look into.
When I sat down and thought about it, a lot of it was like, in a candidate for the position, I'd like somebody who, it was more like traits in a candidate, like ability to multitask without neglecting the items of less urgency. It seems like sometimes urgent i- or non-urgent items get pushed to the side because we had so many urgent items going on that the non-urgent items then, oh wait, what happened to that item? Also, possibly report on like, so like when we approve something, and this would go for all departments really. If we approve something, like we approve the purchase of a truck, let us know, hey, we got that truck, it's arrived, we're getting it outfitted, things like that. I know there was, like the update to the website and the billing system that we had approved, and I don't think that ever came to fruition maybe. Things like that, that all of us as a whole need to be better about communicating about so that we know, like I know the money didn't get spent because we don't have the item, but we approved it, so...
We do have that, by the way. If we go over the billing system.
We did, we did get it.
Online payment system, yeah.
Okay.
It's been, it took us a while to get it implemented because of issues with our software.
Okay.
But it's been live for, you know, at least since December.
December, okay. And see, I just auto-draft, so I have no idea what that portal looks like. So, you know, things like that, like updating us, saying, hey, this is now live, and maybe you guys did and I just spaced it and all the things. But that's really, somebody who has a stake in our community, who's involved in our community and lives here and is, cares, and shows up to the meetings that they're supposed to be board members of, representing the city. That, that's more what I'm looking for when I say potential candidate. I just, I want somebody who can coordinate all the things and be present.
Do you want somebody, I guess, that participates in some of the community events? Like with Fall Fest, do you want the city administrator to be there, to be a part of the dunking and things like that? Is that something that you want to see, I guess?
That's, I mean, that's, that's my ideal. I try and go to all the events. I know this last couple of events, my schedule's been completely crazy with my kiddo and my third job, so I haven't quite made it to all of the events. But, you know, that's something I feel like we as council members and the administrator should be involved in those things. We're the face of the city and I feel like the city administrator is also the face of the city because he's the person who the community and the businesses have contact with. And so I feel like they should be present and...
I'm not going to get dumped every once in a while.
I've missed out on the pie every year so far.
And I forgot a sign-up sheet.
Yeah. I think I have.
What are you thinking, G, I guess, I mean, representing the businesses?
Well, I think at a bare minimum, you know, I think what the businesses would really like to see in the Chamber is somebody that is open to, to businesses, to making time for them, but really, more than that, you know, engaging and going out and visiting them and being the face is important, you know? I'm sorry.
And approachable.
Approachable. And, you know, and it's set on there, you know, being, representing on boards and things like that, getting involved in the local boards. I know the Chamber, we've kind of talked about that, but we have an expenditure spot. I think it's important because that's a great way to hear what's happening with the businesses and the future and, you know, the city and the Chamber need to work together. As classes were growing and trying to attract new businesses and stuff, we need to be talking to each other. And I talk with, you know, Micah and Matt and Brooke and all them all the time, but I really do feel like the city administrator, it would be helpful for them to be there. And if they can't, you know, send a representative. So there, that communication is open. And it's important for businesses, you know, I know they want to see the person that's bringing their items to city council. They want to have a relationship where they feel like they can come in and talk to them. I mean, that's something that we've heard a lot. As far as community events go, I think it's very important. Not only from a, they're the face of the city, but you guys are the funders of the events. And, you know, for me, I can come and tell you and report to you how the event went, but I think it's important for you to come and see your investment. You know, I want to know that you guys are happy with what you're investing your money in and that I'm doing what you are asking us to do. So, I mean, I think that's, that's the biggest thing. I will mention one other thing that was kind of brought to my attention. There is, and I don't know, it's been a while since I've been involved in it, but there's another board called REAP, which is a regional economic area partnership. And I think that there's just a lot of things happening in our region. And I would say, from a Chamber and a business standpoint, it would be nice to have somebody involved in that and maybe giving reports. I don't know as a Chamber president that it's really, where I could attend those, it's more elected officials or an administrator. But, you know, there, there was all this stuff happening with possibly Kellogg and with the bypass and these different things. And I've gotten calls from people that are on those committees asking my opinion about it. Not that I would love to do my opinion and my opinion might be different, but I think it's good for our city to be represented.
What do you think? I remember during the conversation on the sign ordinances, right there especially in front of the North Front of the Road, River View, the whole area, the sign ordinance conversation kept going back and forth. I remember for the longest time. I guess what's one way that the city can better communicate? Because one thing that I was having struggles with on which direction really to go was, it really was affecting those businesses right there. It was such a small town where things get, you know, our policies really sort of affecting a small group of people. And in that particular instance, it was affecting those people, you know, Case Hardware, the van shop and everything. And so, what's a better way that the city administrator can be held accountable in when those conversations occur, I guess, to the businesses that are expressing their concerns? Not necessarily guaranteeing or promising any particular result, but just knowing that their concerns are expressed.
Well, I, I think that goes back to the beginning of just engaging with businesses. If businesses know they, there's an open door where they can come in and talk or they know what's happening, or they feel like they can have that conversation, I don't think you'll get into that predicament. I think, you know, and a part of it is on the businesses too. I mean, we need to do a better job of engaging and coming to city council and maybe I can help with that in sending out kind of a wrap-up of city council meetings to businesses the day after on things, on items that were taken to them. And maybe that, that's a way that I could work with the city administrator to do. But I think, I mean, the communication has to be there.
I know it's hard to, for businesses who are trying to remain non-political, to come to a council meeting because even though we're, we don't have a party per se, it's still politics.
Yeah.
So I know that it's hard for them sometimes to come and stand up because it will be seen as political even though it's not.
Yeah, and you never know, just same with the Chamber, you never know. You probably have customers on both sides. And, you know, as a business owner, as a Chamber, we'd be very careful because we represent everybody. And so it does get sticky, but...
Yeah.
And I, you know, kind of going back to the sign ordinance, I think there were things that, I think, how do I want to say it? I think that there were some really valid points that kind of got lost in all of the back and forth. I think with that, the biggest thing is looking forward and again, going back to the REAP comment of, you know, we might have an overpass going right through Goddard on Kellogg. And if you take out all those poll signs right now and make everybody go to monument signs, what's going to happen when you have a flyover? They're going to have to go back to monument signs.
Yeah.
Poll signs. And so it's a matter of knowing what, where are we headed? Where are we going? And that communication again with the Chamber and businesses and the city. It just, it has to happen.
What about Wampo? Is that something?
Wampo?
Wampo, I haven't seen it.
Yeah.
Wampo Wampo.
Did you say Wampo?
I said Wampo. I'm from Kansas, I'm going to say Wampo. Is that something we should have a representative about?
Well, I, I am the representative that goes to Wampo.
Okay, cool.
Wampo's good. It, it's, it's a fine balance, I guess, from a politician's standpoint and a city administrator's standpoint. You want to have policy in place to where you can let the council advocate for the people, but that doesn't drastically change the function of a city, right? To where depending on who sits on this board, we're not just all of a sudden going to be doing completely different things, you know? And so much of that is, is a part of who the city administrator is and being consistent with how we do the functions of the city. One thing that I've noticed is our developments haven't been consistent. And we periodically change the way we operate and we need, we need a more formal policy as to if a developer wants to come in and do a single-family residential development or duplexes or whatever it may be, there's a policy in place. There's, you know, step A, B, C, and D. And the community knows that, so it's not like we have these packed meetings where the world's coming to an end every time. We know what the city's policy is and standpoint is on things if we just follow the policy. And as far as documentation on, on all of this, we need a better documentation. So I think if we have things in place like that, it'll just help with the consistency of the functioning of the city. I guess Denise, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Nothing? You've been very, very involved and I appreciate it.
Oh yeah, you talk about the getting the city administration.
Yeah.
I'd like to see, like, either small-town value, like Western value. Because, you know, it's like, my husband, when I left, got into an car accident where the car was rolled and, and there was three vehicles, there was five, five people that were people, one was in front, one was a deputy. And they, you know, there was a fire, so they tried to fire out and people out. And I asked him, did anyone pull their cameras out and take pictures the entire time? Nope. You know, like in New York, you know, some big town. That's a good interview question is that if they say everybody goes and helps and not one person wants to, that's, that's a good, good moral value, right though? You know, it's kind of a...
We have something special. Yeah. We have something special here in Goddard where I think we do have that. The small-town American values, you know, Goddard values. We help each other. You know, we might not agree on everything, but that's what makes America great. But I think we do care about this community and we're passionate about this community. And I think to have somebody that's the main person, to be as passionate about it, is very important. So I think that's right. And that spreads throughout the community too. And you need somebody that has those values as well. What about our staff? Do we have any, we've been thinking about things since we've transitioned into where we're at now? Do we have any recommendations or...
I don't really know that, from my perspective, that I can make a recommendation, but based on what you're going to be able to get as far as the applicants from there, if we're able to be highly involved in providing you guys input and that input being taken seriously. I think everyone here would agree that that's going to mean a lot because each one of us bring a different perspective of life skills and, and what our jobs entail and how that person might affect that.
Perfect point.
Yeah, that's definitely something, I want someone who can mesh well with all the different personalities and skill sets, as you say, but not micromanage you guys. Because you all do your jobs very well. And that's what makes our city great, is that you guys do that. So just finding that piece that can facilitate basically is what, what I want.
Where in the process would you guys like to see more involvement from the department heads, I guess? From, do you want it at a certain number of candidates that we have? Do you, or do you want all the candidates to come in and do a day interview? Or, I mean, what do you guys think or see or filter it down to three candidates? And then you guys, I mean, I'll open any down.
I don't know, if you'd want to see every single candidate?
Every, yeah, that's the...
Five? I don't want to see the second stringers.
Hey now, everybody wants to know.
Five might be a good number.
Five?
I think too, I know you were kind of hesitant on hiring a headhunter, but that's where they can streamline the process. They can, they know the candidates, they can lead them out for you. Familiar with the process.
You guys write down what's important to you, right? What you're looking for, yeah. Is that your, is it your statement?
We need somebody that's experienced with developing, somebody that's experienced with growth, somebody that has experience as a city manager/city administrator. This is not a rookie job.
Right.
We need somebody who can come in here and you're not going to be able to get away with paying some newbie with a year or two under the belt. They need to come in and be able to go right away doing the job of this city because we have big growth coming. We have expansion coming. We have a, a lot of opportunities and we're going to need somebody who knows how to play that game of what is worth pursuing, what is not worth pursuing, what is a waste of time, what is necessary for the type of growth we're going to have.
I guess, from the staff's perspective, you know, there's been a comment in the past in one of the council meetings as far as a, a new community plan. Is it, I, I know I've spoken with Micah about this. It's very, very expensive to do new community planning. It can cost over a hundred thousand dollars to do these plans. And is that something that you guys think as department heads would help you? Or would it only say, yes, we, and I guess this is more of a Micah question, or would a new community plan more likely say, we need more affordable housing, we need more multifamily, you know? What, what, what's your guys' opinion on that?
Does the plan need to change or are we just like...
Our strategic plan that we've been working off of since 2015. 2015, we have not, well, we have, we have worked that plan, we've achieved those goals, but we need more of what was in that plan. We have park systems we need to expand, we have roads we need to address, we have amenities and quality of life improvements that we need for our people. I think that the strategic planning process is very valuable, but I don't see that we have, I see that the growth that we're going to have is going to, we're going to still need to do those same things again to address our, this, you know, these new community members we're going to have.
Is it tough? Is it feasible just to do revisions to it or...
We can, we can, I, I know the people that do these, that are previous strategic plan through Bevo, or the Poli-Polition Management Center. And I can reach out to them and I talk about what they would suggest as far as adapting or, you know, getting that process.
Because I, I guess for a new city administrator to know when he, he or she's going into the position, where does the city need to go? I mean, instead of having their own opinion, you know, it needs to be the opinion of the community, of course. And if it is outdated, I think we need it updated. And maybe Aubrey's right, we only, you know, look at it from, you know, the housing.
I don't know that it needs to be updated as much as it needs to be reauthorized, so to speak, without going through like an authorization process. But it needs to be, it needs to come back before the council. We need to be addressed it, see where we're, where we are doing well, where we need to.
Like a refresh.
Nice.
So as you go along and address those issues, right? The revisions, I want revisions. So if we go to revisions, are we, can you handle that or is that, is that a legal document?
Can I what? Handle...
Is the strategic plan a legal document or is it basically just a, it's our mission statement?
It's a policy document.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline.
It's a guideline. It's not, it's not...
The way we use it is more to, you know...
No, I think it would be really nice if we could do a joint workshop though, businesses and the council and the staff to kind of talk about business growth. I don't know how that fits in with that, but, you know, I know businesses would like to have input on processes, not processes, but just be able to sit down and talk like this about...
Well, and I think the planning mission as well.
And so we could avoid issues like the sign issue and that.
And couldn't you do an online survey? I mean, that's probably cheaper than, and just to get the community...
Yeah, but there's participation alone. Yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of skewed.
Yeah, the online surveys, they become problematic because we, so we are required to publish things in a local newspaper, right? So people without internet, they don't know what's going on. How you doing, Brett? And so people who might not have Facebook or might not have access to internet, their voices aren't heard in that perspective. And that's why the state requires us to publish things in the local newspapers so that the people who possibly aren't on, which are probably fewer and fewer, it goes by, but they still know what's happening in Goddard. So it, it's not a good sample as to what the community is really looking for. So it, it's not a good sample as to what the community is really looking for.
Or it's just never seen you with that.
Especially ones on social media because it gets so.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying like rate what's important to you, just asking specific questions, rate one through five, what's important in your community.
Yeah, and doesn't the, I guess the strategic plan, that's what a lot of it is, is like sampling of the community, that the firm goes out and pretty much just polls the community, asks what they want, yeah.
They have a big open forum and you come put stickies on, you know, sticky notes on big placards of what you wanna see, I like this, I don't like this.
How did they advertise that? Cause I never, in 2015 I was here and I never heard anything about.
Well, it probably just went out to the, and I was here in 2015, but I'm assuming it probably went out to the citizens. I know you live off of Murray Meadows, so I'm sure.
I know, it was through the school.
They probably posted on the city website.
Watermelon.
Tell them back. How you doing, Brent?
Hey.
I guess we've talked about all of that, kind of everybody's perspective and opinion on the direction on the city administration. You've been here longer than any of us, right? You guys, do you have any input? Did you wanna see change or you think something could be different?
I just, just wanna see that, like, the plans, like, we had a park board at one time and we were working on trying to get the north park done and that started five years ago and it's still, nothing's been done with it. And I think one of the things in it was, I know it raised to the 1% sales tax, right? And that was, part of that was for the north park expansion.
Yep.
And we still really haven't done much about it at all.
So that kind of, I guess, goes back to what we're talking about. We would have plans and then it was never executed for whatever reason. You know, it never would come to fruition and whether it may be a community center plan or things with, we've never, we would come up with ideas and we would do things like this and then we would never.
Follow through, right?
For whatever that may be, you know? And I was talking earlier, I think it would be good, and it's not just specific to the city administrator, but more policy wise here in Goddard is if somebody delivers something to the city of Goddard, whether it's a church or a chamber of commerce, they have a, a process in place that it needs to happen within X amount of days and go before the council so things don't get lost in the cracks, kind of like what Sarah was talking about. Forgotten about because we're prioritizing other things over others. I don't know, what do you think?
Exactly.
Well, Brian, do you have anything?
I think, I don't know that I have necessarily any comments with regard to the job description and duties of the position. I think it's pretty well outlined in what, what you read, Hunter. I mean, I think it is important to have a city administrator who is involved in the community and, you know, routinely goes to chamber events and, and it helps that person to kind of keep their finger on the pulse of the community. I think that has been a challenge over the years because there have been a lot of competing interests and competing ideas and competing priorities. I think it's important to go back to the strategic vision and outline, hey, what are our five biggest challenges and priorities that we need to focus on? And routinely review that. Because, I, I mean, I've seen it with, you know, each council member has their own projects, priorities. And, and it's so easy to get pulled off track in trying to manage you all as a group and keep you, you know, moving in a cohesive direction is, is a tough thing.
Cause it's five bosses.
Pardon me?
It's five bosses, it's not just one.
That's exactly right. I mean, it's, it's, it's incredibly difficult. It's unlike any other job that you could imagine. You don't have just one person you answer to, you got five. And, and sometimes you've got to proceed with a direction that maybe is gonna upset two of the five because they don't agree with it. But you gotta take direction from the majority. And so you've got to be somebody who can build consensus, who can keep their finger on the pulse of the community, who can keep their finger on the pulse of the five of you. I think communication is far and away the most important trait of that position. And, and I think that may at times require more delegation, less, you know, getting into, into the dirt on every single project that may require bringing additional staff in to help cover stuff that needs to get done. But I think it would be helpful to have somebody who can do that, who can be visible and involved in the community. I agree with Matt, I don't think this is a position for a rookie.
No.
Absolutely. I mean, I, and, and I've been talking about this for, for five years now. Goddard may be a small town by population standards, but there is nothing small town about the projects and issues that Goddard has been working for the last five to 10 years. There's no way you have a $60 million plus star bond project in a small town. No way. And, and so, you know, the, the issues that we face on a day to day basis are way, way above the normal pay grade of, of somebody who would be managing a 4,000, you know, person town. There are, you know, complications associated with the fact that you're on the edge of a metro area. I mean, I understand the desire to remain a small town, but.
But that's kind of something, that's in our hearts, you know, it's, like you said, it's how people act. We can have these businesses and this growth and still be a small town and still have our small town values.
But you're gonna have big city issues that you have to confront because of the proximity to Wichita. Yeah. You can desire, you know, to operate as a small town, but the truth of the matter is inertia's not gonna allow that to happen. Right. Because of the proximity. Yeah. You can still try and maintain a lot of the small town feel and the attitudes that, that, you know, prevail in a small town, but you also have to understand the unique circumstances associated with being on the periphery of a metro area.
Right. Well, and we could say today, no more development, no more, nothing, nothing. And we're still gonna be a big town because it's gonna build the rest.
Wichita's gonna wrap around, you're gonna become a Eastburn.
So it's what do we want to be able to control? What do we wanna be, what do we want to be able to control?
Well, it's not, it's, at the end of the day, it's not our choice to control the economy. It's not our choice to control that people are wanting to move into Western City campus. And the, whether people like it or not, the multifamily housing, it's coming. And one point, I think me and you were talking about it the other night at the planning commission meeting is one thing that's kind of interesting that the city of Goddard is in this position with the multifamily housing is can Goddard compared to the county? Or Goddard compared to the city of Wichita? We are aware of those concerns of the community and we're willing to put protective overlays where there's only a certain percentage of duplexes or multifamily housing in it. Whether there's more greenery where people can see county and the city of Wichita, they don't care. They're gonna do 100% and they're gonna do all of it. And so the, it's, we have to, we have to work both sides, right? And we have to be able to work with the growth, but we also get the ability to manage that at the same time. And so that's kind of what would be interesting. Doing a refresh of the strategic plan might give us a better insight to how that might look. I guess a few examples is South of Kellogg or, or North of Kellogg, South of Ising. They got that development, it's all duplexes. There was 300 people that showed up to the, that county meeting for the 135th and Central development. 300 people showed up, they did, 100% duplexes. And so with that small town feel, we're gonna grow regardless, but the people of this community have such a great communication with the council that, and, and a council that actually pays attention and listens. And so we're willing to change how we operate to accommodate those concerns, but you're, you're never gonna get 100% of everything you want, right? Yeah, so how we manage the best of both worlds, we'll still get, still get the property tax base, we'll still get the sales tax base, but we're liable to manage it and make it look better and protect Goddard in a lot of different ways.
I think, no, go ahead.
I think it would be important though to hire the city administrator first before going through any kind of strategic plan process. Cause I think it's important for that person to go through the process because there's something different about listening and being in a plan that other people have done. Like, I think being part of that process and really hearing it face to face and being able to have conversations with people makes a big difference.
I, 100% I go, wow. And I also think that, you know, when we have our two regular meetings twice a month, I mean, we got a lot, you know, that, that we got a lot of ground to cover during those meetings. But we never, ever have an opportunity to just sit and talk about big picture, what do you guys want? What do you guys want? You know, talk about the different challenges that, you know, the city is facing. Or talk about what are our priorities? What do we want to spend the next year focusing on trying to accomplish? And, and I think doing these kinds of public forums is a good thing. You know, I don't know how many, but we never have the opportunity to have those conversations. You know, and, you know, and I've talked individually with some of you all, but obviously there are challenges. We can't have conversations with the majority unless we're here in open session. So maybe either scheduling special workshops like this, whether it's once a quarter, a couple times a year, I don't know what the right mix is. It's a rude idea. To talk through, you know, identify, okay, this, we're gonna talk about this. We're gonna talk about this. Mica's gonna talk about the challenges, you know, housing challenges. Or Angie's gonna talk about concerns from the business community. And we're just gonna talk, debate through it. I mean, that, I think, would be of value to any city administrator who's trying to figure out, what do you guys want? Because that's a, it can be a real challenge. And, and sometimes it can be difficult to discern, you know, based on comments from the bench, okay, was the majority wanting to go in this direction or that direction? It's, it's just, it's a unique challenge. And I think, so having that thorough conversation, it, at least for me, it helps give me a better understanding where you guys as a group wanna go.
Yeah. I guess where, what do you guys think on the frequency of more of these shops? Even if a lot of people from the community don't show up, just to, for the staff to communicate with the council, I mean, well, how often do you think we, we should have them?
Well, I can think of at least a couple of occasions a year where they would be useful to have. First would be around this time of year, maybe April or May to coincide with a capital budget discussion, which is where, that's, cause that's a five year budget. Budgets, which is where it's a five year plan. It's a, you know, where are, what resources are we gonna have available over the course of the next five years? And what projects do we want to see completed this year, next year, five years down the road? What's on our wish list for 10 years down the road? That we need to start thinking about that we could possibly start planning for now. And that, you know, that's, it, it is difficult to get the public involved with the budget process because it is, the cap, the operating budget process is so closely tied to regular operations. There's not really a lot we can do about it. Do you wanna hear about the latest update from our IT provider about our contract with Microsoft?
Does it work?
But, but if we need to pave all the streets in the old part of town, do you wanna be involved with that conversation? If we are going to hit a certain percentage of our lane miles every year with our street maintenance, what, what, what does the public wanna see on that? That kind of thing, they want, they, they, not only should they be involved with that conversation, but they will have a better understanding of what we're talking about.
It'd be nice even to know, okay, you know, this road's rough, but yeah, we have a plan for next year.
Right, and, and, you know, we, we like to take that opportunity even to educate about what, what happens when we are doing the roadwork. Are we just doing an overlay? Are we digging down with, and putting in new cress rock and rebuilding the base? So that's, that's a good opportunity for that. Another time would probably be around when we do adopt the annual budget, which is now end of summer, early fall, just to reassess where we're at with what we discussed earlier in the year. What projects have started that we planned for way back when? And what is the status of that project? When do we anticipate completion? The first of the year is a bad time for most of us because we have family, other things going on. Plus as staff, we have year end stuff that we're trying to tie up. But maybe the second meeting in January, the second meeting in, or the first meeting in February, at that point, we're looking at a discussion about, you know, the, the one year plan as opposed to the five year, you know, so.
So quarterly.
Quarterly.
Yeah, I think quarterly is a good.
I was gonna say quarterly, although I don't know that Q4 is great for, I don't know what we could necessarily do. I mean, I'm not saying we shouldn't have one, but I just, from my mind, I can think of at least.
Well, and it could be like quarterly as needed. Like, those three definitely, but then fourth quarter, if nobody sees a need for it, we say, okay, we're not gonna do it this quarter. Or, hey, why don't we talk about, we've, we've got this park budget, we want, that was part of the big plan, let's work on what, where our goals are, what we're doing there.
Maybe, maybe Q4 is a good time for meeting with the council and planning commission to review what's going on.
Though I would like to do that before to get to the fourth quarters.
I mean, I, I might be naive here, but I can't imagine that it wouldn't be, that it would be difficult to come up with a topic to discuss for one hour. Right. Three or four times a year. You know, knowing that one or two of those are gonna be dedicated to budgetary issues, you know, maybe one, you know, one year spending priorities, et cetera. But, but even those other couple of occasions, I mean, we can talk about, discuss, educate the public on challenges facing the city. Unique considerations that we need to talk through and figure out, what does the community want to do? You know, what direction do they want us to take the city with regard to a certain map? How do they, how do they want us to address the housing difficulties? How do they want us to, you know, deal with the signage issues? Or dealing with building up Main Street, a north park? I mean, I can brainstorm all kinds of topics
Right.
that we could talk about over and out. And other topics will naturally develop.
Yeah.
And so I don't think it would be difficult to come up with four of these a year.
I don't think it would be either. I think that the biggest thing for something like this is not only for the community to have their input freely, but also let the staff kind of get a good read on the council. I mean, because in a lot of ways, that's like what you said before, it's one of the biggest troubles of the city administrator is which direction are we really heading?
Right.
And quarterly, to make sure the ship is heading in the right direction.
It also helps you guys.
Yeah.
It helps to keep your eye on the ball. If you all decide, hey, these are going to be our priorities for the next year, the next five years, okay? And three months later, somebody's coming to you, hey, you know, really want, you know, this big incentive, I want to do this new development. Okay, but how is that going to affect the priorities that we've already set out?
Right.
Do we have the money for it? Do we have the manpower for it? I mean, it helps you to keep your eyes on the ball. And you can always, you can always change that plan. That's your prerogative as the governing body. But if you don't talk about it, you don't see it, it's hard to remember. Well, hey, what did we map out as our game plan for this year, for next year?
At a company, you know, big, small, people walk into
Right.
the department head's office and they figure out the problem. We don't do that here. You know, the bosses aren't in every day and talking to each department head and...
We're not allowed to talk to each other on this.
And so it's not, I mean, so in a lot of ways, this is beneficial to staff.
It's also bonding for the council so that you all have opportunities to talk big picture, policy stuff, decide, you know, where there is areas of agreement, maybe where there are areas of disagreement, how you can bridge that. And it's okay. It's completely okay to not agree.
Yeah.
I'm not one of those people who, I mean, we have these conversations in my firm and I'll be the very first person to say, it's okay to disagree. I don't want everybody rubber-stamping what I think. I don't like to be on the losing side. But sometimes it happens.
Yeah.
But you got to talk through it.
Yeah.
I think too, we can, and we can change up where we do these forums or when we do these forums. You want to do one focused on business? Go do one at one of Angie's events or one of her monthly meetings. Do it there where the people are already there. And they don't have to come to a special meeting.
Yeah. Now, how does that... I mean, we...
You just notice it up.
Okay.
You just notice it up as a special meeting.
Just like we did this one.
Yep.
Nothing different.
You could meet at whatever time you want and wherever you want.
Okay.
We can go out to Tanganika, we can go wherever you want.
I guess we're going to wrap it up here in a few minutes, but summary, since we were talking about goals and everything, I think it'd be important to bring up that Matt and the staff are working on a big project. I guess, Matt, do you want to talk about it a little bit with bond?
Yeah, we've got three road projects we'd like to complete this year. One of them is going to tie in probably with our ARCA project, which is the rehab of the North Fronten Road. Everybody here down there who knows it's in bad shape. So we're going to tie it with, get that, then hopefully get it completed by the person that will be doing the ARCA intersection to Starbonne District so we can get some cost savings there. We're also going to pave Second Street here on this side of town that are portioning Second Street. We're going to pave that all the way from Main to 199th. Plans going forward, when we can, we're going to try to do the other dirt roads in the side of town. And then last, we're going to pave Hawkins Lane, which is a road that's at Tanganika. And Tanganika's agreed to have half the cost of that assessed back to them, so.
I guess we haven't decided that's what we're going to do, right?
No, we're looking at the front.
We're throwing them together. I got, I talked to Matt and staff. We need to improve the roads in Goddard. Now, Matt came up with, you know, I pretty much asked a pretty simple question. What can we afford? And we came up with a million and a half. It's a good number to do a bond for our infrastructure. Now, Harland's working on getting estimates for Hawkins Lane, for the North Fronten Road, for some of those streets in all of Goddard. And all of that's going to get kind of bundled together and then presented. Might be over total a million and a half, but we can pick and choose and piecemeal and à la carte it and have that discussion. How are you all doing?
Good.
And so that's one thing that I think the community would really benefit from. I mean, that North Fronten Road is pretty big. And so I think that'll be good.
Brooke and I have also spoken about increasing the annual budget over the next couple of years for our street maintenance program because it's been the same $200,000 a year that we've budgeted since I've been here, which is 12 years this April. So we're going to increase that amount in the budget every year over the next couple of years until hopefully by, you know, three, four years from now, we can double that amount, if not more. So, because, you know, city has grown quite a bit in that time we've got the same dollar amount budgeted. Although we're taking care of more lane miles every year, so that's another... Hopefully we can address some of that with an increased annual expenditure for street maintenance. Take better care of our roads, we don't need to replace them quite so often.
I guess we need to adjourn real quick. But before I adjourn, do you guys have any questions? I don't know if you've watched anything online, or any things. Huh?
I forgot who you were doing this for, I'm sorry.
You're the only one.
Yeah. I wrote it down, the only reason I didn't...
Nothing? Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah.
Second.
Second by Aubrey, I want to go and say aye.
Aye.
Aye.